I do is, most of the time, drive around in circles and talk to people. So I come out and I help with planning though, I help with program building. And that's why Diane asked me to come up today and just visit with you guys a little bit. One of the things that, you know, we're looking at with Northwest as our emergency management program as a whole in our region is really growing. And what we're, what we're actually looking at now, since I started in June of last year, so just a little over a year that I've been with the agency, we've actually gone from, you might have told me to remind me, I'm numbers three or four still, three part-time county emergency managers, I think. There were only part-time employees and now we're down to one county that only has a part-time emergency manager. And we've had a lot of cities add emergency managers as well. So it's a really important role. Northwest supposedly was the quiet quadrant whenever I took the job. It was the one that didn't have, you know, a lot that happened and that's not why I took it, because I love to respond. But in what the first six months of the year, we had three disaster declarations. So the ice storm, the fire, and then actually the blizzard out there in the Panhandle that caused some flooding into another county. So we've got, we've had quite a bit going on. So one of the big things for us is looking at that, just whole emergency management program. We can't respond to this stuff if we don't have good emergency managers and goodwill around the programs in place. So, you know, a lot of what our emergency managers are looking at, we talk about the disaster cycle. So you hear us talk about preparedness, response, recovery, and also mitigation. So there's different grant dollars tied to those, you know, various parts of the disaster cycle. A lot of different activities that go on and it is more than a full-time job. I'm fortunate what I do with the state because I get to come help and come out and help them when they have to respond, but the EMs are really our first line on, on the ground when we do have something happen. So quite a bit of what the emergency managers do is that program building. Preparedness especially is important with all the planning. We talk a lot about whole community planning and trying to get different partners around the counties and cities involved. So that alone, huge amount of relationship management and a lot of driving around, talking to people as well, pulling them into meetings, getting feedback. People don't like to attend any more meetings than they have to attend. So a lot of our emergency managers are meeting one-on-one with folks too, to get that feedback. So that's really, you know, that's a large chunk of the time when we're not responding to something. I'd say the other significant part of what they do outside of that planning and relationship building is the response piece. You know, we, we have our first responders, we have firefighters, we have law enforcement, you know, our EMS, we've got lots of different agencies that respond and somebody has to coordinate all that. And with, you know, the way state law works, you know, you guys know, you have to have an EM program of some kind. When we get into those bigger incidents, that feedback is the state so we can be preparing for what we would have to provide if you guys didn't have the capability locally to respond. That's where the emergency manager comes in. I love our fire chiefs, sheriffs departments, all of our law enforcement agencies. They are busy being tactical when there's your response, not reporting in what's actually going on. So our emergency managers and, you know, and we've got some counties that have some volunteers and deputies. They're a really critical piece of helping us find out what's going on, especially when we have an incident that affects multiple counties. So in that response, you know, we are, I, I, I mean, that's who I talk to. Pick up the phone, call Diane, call her counterparts in the other counties and that's how we as the state know, you know, as we're looking forward, do we have to get ready to, to call in extra resources. The Northwest complex fire back in March was a great example. How many times did I even talk to you that, that first night? But I think I talked to probably what, four or five different times?
Yeah.
Just trying to figure out what resources might even be available from Alfa County to go over and, and help respond. And I was doing that with every emergency manager.
Yeah.
Heck of a lot easier than calling every fire department to find out who was available. So, you know, that, that response piece is extremely critical as well. And, you know, I'll go back to the preparedness and planning. We can't do that response unless we have somebody on the ground all the time, talking to the partners, talking to people in the county, talking to the first response agencies that have, you know, and somebody that has those points of contact. You know, the, the other piece, or another piece that comes in after that response is recovery. We talked about this earlier at our workshop a couple of weeks ago. Recovery is something as, you know, as a state, we're fairly weak on in most of the quadrants as far as emergency management programs. Most of our EM's time gets put into building up those plans, figuring out how to respond and then recovery. It's, it's the touchy-feely stuff nobody wants to deal with a lot of times. So when, when you're talking about homes affected anyways. So that's one thing we're really trying to grow around the state, but in Northwest especially, is how do we tie in two different, two different aspects on recovery with our individual assistance. So when you do have homeowners affected, you know, even the storm you guys had just the, the past weekend. You know, if you have folks out there that need help, we know we're not going to try to declare that. There weren't, there wasn't enough damage.
Right, there wasn't enough damage.
But you've got to have the partners and the availability. So if somebody can recover from that or they need help fixing their home, how do you reach out and do that? So that's what, you know, another role of the emergency manager is finding those resources, you know, working with the state when things aren't available locally, to figure out what's out there that can help. So there, there's that recovery piece. Then there's the, the part that I think you all have probably seen as commissioners at one point in time, our public assistance side. So all the paperwork that comes along with declaring a disaster and getting money back for road damage or building damage, you know, things, things all, you know, your emergency services. That alone, I, well, we're on our second ice storm, I don't know. I think I've done like four of these now in PA, just in the last year of public assistance.
Oh, sure, you probably have, yeah.
I don't want to be Diane. Because that, the paperwork and the coordination that comes into that when you are one of those declared counties is, it's an incredible amount of work. You know, it, it all varies in size of the county, but I went out and was visiting Texas County just a couple of weeks ago, well, I guess about a month ago now. The binder for Texas County for the ice storm in January is that big. It's just, and that wasn't actually everything they had. So, and their clerk put it together for them. So I just, you know, it takes a huge amount of work to have somebody to coordinate that and make sure that that comes in. And that's, you know, we, we need that as the state. We have to have the eyes and ears on the ground and to be able to coordinate that documentation. So that recovery pieces are a critical part as well. You know, you kind of cross your fingers and hope you don't get hit by a disaster and it stays slow. Brandon's a great example. Grant County has a fairly good emergency manager and he was...
So does Wiz can.
Yeah. Well, and Grant County's quiet. We always should never use that word. And he, I think the first two weeks he was on the job, he had a train derailment, some flash flooding and something else and he was just going, okay, wait a minute. This was, that's, Grant County is supposed to not have anything happen.
When I met him, he was really good about going around and getting funds for stuff.
Yeah.
He raised a lot of money for the county through that department.
Yeah.
Very sharp young guy.
Yeah, he is, he's, if I, if I could clone him. I have about three or four of our EMs that are really getting after it, building programs. And as I have people retire, I keep saying if I could clone these three or four. We have a really good group, but I have three or four young, younger EMs that if I could take them and put them in every county, I could just sit back and not have to go a lot of trouble.
Where, where is your office?
I actually am based just north of Stillwater. So we all, as field staff, we work from home. So we're, I drive over, I live right on the Payne-Noble County line. So I'm actually fifteen miles outside of my own territory. So I, because I spend a lot of time, a lot of time out in the field. I'm on the road about four days a week and I stay in hotels about two nights every other week. So I spend, spend a lot of time out in the area. But, you know, I'm glad you mentioned the, the money that Brandon's been looking at. That's a huge part of just that whole preparedness, response, recovery. Is that opportunity to find those, those donors and get out and build some of those relationships. Northwest, to be honest, doesn't have as many resources and trusted partners and some of that available as some of the other quadrants do. Just the way we are, how, how spread out everything is or, you know, population density, it has a huge effect. But there's ways to tap into some of those, especially the energy companies. That's where I think Brandon's had a lot of good luck in, in Grant County with that. So, but that's something you have to be around to build the relationships and, and be able to really put, you know, things full force into that. So as you guys, you know, look at, you know, how, how are you going to develop the EM program and go on what Diane's built? She's got some great relationships to build on. That's one of the things with all of my newer EMs. They've come in and they've had a good foundation to take and run with. And that's with Grant County, Rich left Brandon a great structure and, and he purposely didn't go into a lot of detail with something. He, you know, their hazard mitigation plan's a great example. He got it started just enough that the new emergency manager could take it and then go update and formulate it the way they wanted it because he wanted somebody who could plan a ten- or fifteen-year program or longer, not just take three years and keep doing what he was doing. And that's, that's something to, to really look at. The other piece that we talk about a lot with funding is mitigation. So of course we've got mitigation dollars hanging out there. We get mitigation money from disasters. And truthfully, Oklahoma leaves a lot of money on the table every year because we, you know, just with the number of plans, you have to have approved plans and, and go through process on, to get to most of that money. But that's about the relationship building too. That's why you've got to have somebody locally that's really dedicated to it. The counties that have been more part-time positions are the ones that are a little farther behind on that than some of the others because they just didn't have somebody you could put that time in. Especially if you have to respond over and over again. Planning and mitigation and all that goes, goes out to the, you know, to the side. So with mitigation, again, there's a, there's a process there, but that's, projects that's got to involve all your school districts. It's, you know, looking at different projects within each of the commissioners' districts. You know, how do you figure out what you can do to mitigate any of those possible damages you would have? And that's, that's something I've seen with some of the private funding too, on the grants. The more planned out some of that is, you know, whether it's your emergency operations plan or your mitigation plan, those companies are much more likely to, to try to help out. So that's kind of my, my quick rundown of the, the really big picture things we are looking at on the EM side. You know, they go through so much training. You know, we, we haven't offered as much training. We held a bit of a gap there about the last six months of last year because we changed state training officers. But we now, like every quadrant, has a training plan. We've got at least one class a month, I think, offered. Maybe two for the next, you know, few months. And actually, we have a plan out for at least every, you know, some things each quarter through 2019. So there's a lot of training that comes in. Going back to Grant County again, and Woods County, they spent, those two guys when they first started, a lot of time in training. I, you know, and they had the, the freedom to go do some of that. I know they're still trying to get out and do quite a bit. Dewey County has a brand-new emergency manager, brand-new. She started June 1st full-time and they, they actually were the county that just changed their position from part-time to full-time. And she's been trying to figure out how to squeeze in all the training and, and things as well. So that's a key piece of it. You know, she, it's been a little bit of a difference on, you know, those three counties. They use them as an example. Two of those three EMs got hired with absolutely no emergency management experience. And, you know, their commissioners and their support have really said, go get the training, do what you need to do. They were good problem solvers and that's a key piece of this, is being able to go out and, and problem solve and look at that big picture, but catch all the details too. The two that didn't have an emergency management background are, are very good at that. Woods County is one of them. He came in with really no EM background and literally got thrown into the fire since he was helping out, clean up after Anderson Creek in the 350 complex. We'll talk about paperwork. He had, he basically got handed the FBAG paperwork and said, here you go, figure it out. And, and also with his mitigation plan that I had to. So he's, but, you know, he's a problem solver and, and gets it done. Brandon with Grant County came in, he's got some emergency management background, but it was a little bit different. His was in the military and so he has, you know, a little bit, little bit of a range of experience there, but very willing to go get the training done and really try to get, get the civilian side of it. And if you've talked to him, you know, he's, he's also a problem solver. He's going to figure out what all the solutions are and, and try to figure out what the best one is, so. Yeah, oh yeah. Yeah, they're, they're fantastic. So the new Dewey County EM, same way. She's just trying to, she really, it, it's, it's been a little overwhelming. I think he met her, you know, a couple of weeks ago and she's really still trying to get help.
Okay.
Yep. But that's, you know, those are just a few of the things, that relationship building, being able to go after the training, the problem solving. The great thing about Northwest in general is those are the kinds of things that I have in all of the emergency managers in the, in my counties and my cities that I cover. So, and I have, I should have clarified this. I have north of forty and west of thirty-five, except for the metro area. So, and when I say Northwest, Logan County on up, just not, not that metro area.
Oh yeah, you had quite an area, that's what I figured it earlier you had.
Yeah, it's about twenty, between twenty and twenty-two thousand square miles. I got to go look at again. I have the Panhandle, so I get pretty, pretty diverse.
No bad planning.
Yeah.
Would you be so kind as to leave your contact information?
Absolutely. And you guys can call and ask questions. You know, going back to a couple of things on funding, we do have the mitigation program. Like I mentioned, we also have the Emergency Management Performance Grant. I think you've been in and out. The EMPG, we, it's, it's getting more competitive because especially with the changes on the federal government side, we're looking at a little more limited funding as well. But it's meant to really grow the program. So, you know, as you guys look forward and hire a new emergency manager, that's been another key thing. Like Brandon in Grant County and Lisa in Dewey County are both looking at, at adding that. Really good example of how a program is, you can build that with. The, the application changes a little every year and the requirements, just based on what our agency's doing or what federal government requires. But generally, the EMPG is a good foundation to build on. Best example I can use for that is Major County. Teresa Lackey, the, the county EM there, took her program when she started, not funded at all as far as funding from us, and she just used the EMPG guidelines as a structure. And she built on that four or five years and she, she got EMPG funding last year and of course will continue to fund her as long as money's available and meets the requirements. She had to make one tweak to her LEPC meetings to add some planning. Otherwise, she was meeting every requirement. And so that's something, you know, as you guys look forward to and encouraging, you know, somebody to take what Diane's built and look at those because a lot of what needs to be in place is in place.
The EMPG was same as SLA, they just changed that. And we were in the SLA and then they made the major changes into the EMPG.
Yeah.
Requirements really upped and on what we had to get done. And I just don't have the energy to do all of them. So when you do hire someone new, it's really, you know, if they've got a lot of energy, it's a great program to get back into because we had been in it, or I had been in it the whole time, so.
And it's a great, I said, it's a great structure to build on. Just, I mean, Teresa really did, she just took it.
I'm in her team, she's a sharp girl.
She's got a lot of energy, yeah.
And, and I just, you know, I was lucky, I inherited her.
Yeah. One-on-one.
Yeah.
Do you all have any questions for me on anything?
But remember Teresa has a helper.
Oh, she does?
Yes, she does, guys. I mean, it's, you know, come on, yeah, let's give credit where credit's due. Teresa's good, she's really good, but she does have, I have a helper.
Yeah, she's got Lynn hired. Well, and that's part of the reason, she needed to expand her planning and that just, that is such a drain on, on time.
You just can't unless you have extra help, so.
Yeah. It's actually what she uses her EMPG money for is to pay the part-time person to help with the planning, which seems all backwards, but that she, she literally couldn't get mitigation in her emergency operations plans updated without additional help. So, which happens when you carry multiple titles. And almost all of our full-time, you know, our, our EMs that are full-time that are county employees are EM in safety or EM in 911 or...
I saw she did 911, actually.
She's got EM, 911, and safety.
Yeah.
And I wanted to add, I think they were trying to add flood, flood plain and she's been able to kind of hold that off for now.
Yeah, if there's any little extra, they're going to try to tap it on her, but she's not going to take it.
But almost every EM has.
I mean, she can't, she's, she's got friends full with 911. And she did the mapping, but she worked for the assessor's office previous to her emergency management. So she was very much aware in how that went, so.
And working with her, she, she's, she is, I will say of, of all the counties, the one I wish they could figure out how to take one of those titles. Not the EM one, I want her to keep that. But if, if they could figure out how to take one of those titles out because it, it is an overload, that's why she had to have the help to be able to look at plans because her plans were coming up and needed to be updated and there was no way she could get to them. We just, you know, we talked about it and, and, you know, really looked at some things. Ethan's kind of the same way in Woods County and, and really Brandon is as well. They can add some IT things on to it.
They ITed on to them and different jobs and... It's, it's just because they don't understand that emergency management, there is a lot to it. It's just, you know, and...
A lot of paperwork.
There's just a whole, whole lot of on the road, being gone. And you've got to be able to be on the road and be...
It's a key part of getting together with the funds.
Yes, yes.
That training and that relationship building, those are probably, from what I've seen on your side, the two biggest time consumers. Because you've got to be out and be that face and that's Dewey County. She's figuring that out right now. It's, it's hard to make that time. And I was like, I don't care if you don't get anything else done on your training in June and July, go meet your partners, go talk to them because it's such a critical thing for her. She's brand-new, she doesn't owe you.
Right. And Junior might lead her astray anyhow.
Junior, yes. No, Junior, Junior, the, the thing is with our commissioners there in Dewey County too, they've been really supportive. When Dylan told me they were going to upgrade that position, he said, well, I, I think we're going to change it to full-time. I was like, you just, he might as well have said Merry Christmas, we're going to make it full-time, so it was right before the holidays because he, that was one of the best things they could have done. You know, they're, they're the same, you know, similar to a lot of counties. They had, the perception was, we can just have a small program, but they kept getting the ice storms, they kept getting, you know, road damage from water and it was just enough and they realized, well, we, we can get by. You know, the fire departments there worked well, but they couldn't move as far forward as they wanted to. Alex, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. That was a very quick rundown.
Contact information.
I'm going to leave you my cards. If you guys have anything, absolutely give me a call. Hopefully you can get somebody in that gets, you know, some time with Diane and I know she'll be around, she's not going to disappear on us entirely. Other Northwest EMs would probably come hunt her down if she tried to do that.
We did get that deal done with, it was supposed to be CD seven, go up there or whatever. Was it, what, what deal was you, updating something?
Our hazard mitigation?
Yes.
No. Your hazard mitigation program is what your next EM is going to have to start putting together. It's an update. Yes, we have our hazard mitigation program done, but it is time to update our hazard mitigation. And the book, the book is like this and the ESF's, we've got about two or three more ESF's to put in. And it's, the way the state has changed that, they're knocking it down with what is required and it'll only be this big. But I've met with SWOT.
Yes.
They're sending the contract for us to sign. Yes, I'm still in the works. I'm just not pushing it too fast because I want the new EM to be in on the ground of this emergency management. This is part of the mitigation knowledge, going out and talking to each one of our jurisdictions, getting, you know, mitigation from them. And it's important that the new EM be in touch with that. And that way it gets them involved, they know what's going on. So I'm just kind of holding this off, but yes, we can sign the contracts if you guys are willing after you've looked at it. And it's the same contract that Major County has signed. Teresa and I went down together and talked with SWOT and...
I, I just knew you had something.
Yeah, we both liked what we, what we got from the girls and it's really hard to find a place anyway.
Yeah, we only have a couple of contractors left. And they're good and reliable.
I talked to Jana and Robin and they're really sweethearts. And talked to her the other day, she was going to send us the contracts, which I'm assuming you haven't got yet, but they're, she's sending.
And mitigation's about, really even with the updates, it, it's about a, you might go get it done in twelve months, but twelve to eighteen-month process to really go through it. The new process in general to get approved, it does take those plans from about three hundred pages or plus. I mean, we've got to count it out. Payne County's plan was like eight hundred pages when it came back to the contractor. Granted, they have Stillwater and the University.
Right.
That's excessive, that, that's a lot. The new plans are sixty to a hundred pages. You know, the, the example that everybody is like a sixty-eight-page document. So it's, it's pretty slim. But, you know, we've, I've seen this actually happen across three counties now. What Rich did in, in Grant County was set up, I mean, he really did the bare bones, looked at it and then left it, like tried to leave it in as good a shape as he could for Brandon to really take the process and run with it so Brandon could get out, talk to people, get to know everything. In Woods County, I don't think Steve had really gotten to updating anything. And so Ethan had to kind of start from the ground up on it. In Dewey County, they were midstream when Beth had her stroke last fall and was not able to return to work. And Lisa's just, the, the new emergency manager is kind of like, wait, what am I into? Because now she has edits from three or four other people, but really she's got to go back and start from the beginning.
Because you don't know what you're looking at and what they had to have, so.
Having the basics there and being able to run with it as the new EM is, from what I've seen, probably the best scenario because they get to know everybody in the county.
I did my hazard mitigation when I was first hired here. That's why I was hired. But I think it's great that if they come in and kind of on this ground floor, take over, have it all set for them just to walk into on that. It's a great learning experience too, so. Right or wrong, I'm sorry if it wasn't right, but...
Do you have any questions?
I'm good.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks for letting me come up and talk with you. And like I said, call anytime. I know that was the fastest, periodous explanation, but we'll be happy to help answer any questions as you guys move forward and looking forward to working, not looking forward to losing Diane, but looking forward to working with the new EM as we, as we go. I, I keep getting a, a round of them in here, so. Every few months I get a new person I got to work with and break them in, so.
Well, yeah, because Northwest country's a pretty, pretty big area.
Yeah, and we've had, I think we were, when I started, I figured out we had about six people who said, six to eight people who said they would be retired within four years and the dominoes are starting to fall. And, and of course we had, Dewey County was unplanned, but it's been...
She was a, she was on the, she was a fireman. She did their ambulance call, plus she was part-time EM. And this lady was...
She's in her seventies.
And still doing all that. Bless her.
She, she was younger.
People are tough, that's where you live out.
Well, it is, and that is tough.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
I'm excited to see you call again. Bye-bye.
Now we go back to minutes, right? Did you see her nail? Oh my God, an AI, L E nail. Home paper. Now the big bucks.
Do we have any public discussion?
Is there public discussion? Yes, don't. Have you looked at his address? Little Rogers Tunnel? Are they inside a tunnel? That's what it says, it's called, you know, Little Rogers Tunnel.
One of those has, you might go restaurant and stuff in one of those tunnels.
Really?
And there's several. And there's several little shops and stuff, so she must be in just one of those little.
I don't know where Little Rogers Tunnel's at down there.
Oh.
Well, it is in Galcom City.
That was from my estimate, she said she works out of her house.
Right.
Maybe they have main, main office or something.
It is the main office right there, I imagine.
Being up on the city.
Right. I think she.
Must only have four or five, about four of them. It's a big area that she's got, they have four quarters.
Best thing she's got going for her is she don't have a big part of the city, but.
Yes, oh, yeah. But she does have, I mean, it.
Could have.
We're only in the damn part of the city, it's a 40, 30, all right, she's got four down the city.
Thing, it's us, we don't have enough population there, no.
You all owners like to be famous and give your autograph a whole bunch of times.
We're going to hold the rock on the holes, check.
Good.
When you move dark, wherever you're in.
Hey, you're the boss. We go around like you say.
I'm already in the July.
I just set that bar a little bit.
We don't want to cut too much beyond that because I need you set 45 days for it going to be good.
That's John Derry, we're looking.
All right, my guys will be ready whenever, whenever. And we don't want to make it too little better on the oil. Because we need to cut back that, there's this gray black dog. And you put too much in there.
Because it says.
Where else is it?
Michael's got to turn it out. He's bad.
Also supposed to say.
Like her. He knows what the point is.
Really?
He must have been, probably the chair. So he doesn't mean that's District Two, District.
Get a finger. Thank God for a mile with no.
You're the one calling, but.
That's not it.
That's not what you get.
No, that's not it.
Half out of one hundred oil.
That'd be good.
Oh, yeah, be getting back home. How many gallons are all the happens in trucks, Jay?
Five hundred.
So that's a big load.
Yeah, big load, yeah.
How far to go?
Well, normally if you're putting it on, on black dog, you fit a bit, it, it tips a shade over a mile, but this is a black dog, we need to cut the oil back a little because it'll bleed too.
What's, oh, they look farther than that, empty 3000?
Empty, yeah, we, we got about, actually, I don't know, fish adder though, everything, we got about a mile and a, not an eighth out of it.
That room was an offset too.
Yeah.
It's circled there.
Yeah, it's cirched, it's been done.
Well, yeah, we'll get on Tuesday, good, whatever.
Yeah, if it bleeds through, that's what I would be needing to 3000.
A little bit good if you get it down somewhere halfway between Stack Rock.
Yeah, yeah. No, Michael.
Michael, okay.
Michael, I feel like in the end, yeah.
Looks like you're down there.
I have Michael down here.
You know, close to the fire. Right there.
Usually it's south or north and south in the summertime, so they blow so most of the
And better time to be down there, we're going to have to get.
What?
If better time down there, we got time down there.
Oh, leaning it?
Yeah.
There you go.
Maybe signs for our doors, have them rest on everyone.
Really?
They sit them twice and they still mess up, so we got them up.
Sorry.
That's okay.
He apologized.
Seven thirty seventeen, one of them.
That's Jay's. It's Jay's, right?
Yeah.
Oh, he's running.
Jet responders. So it is. Yeah, the weeks had all these, so we need to.
It'd be nice if you could sign a wall with your right hand and sign a wall with your left hand.
I don't want to.
I would say we could sum up again with some good discs.
It's a little crazy.
It was.
It was kind of hot and all, this, Brandon didn't work very well. Worked on short temper because somehow it had no electricity.
She was working all very short temper too.
I was working on very short temper.
I can vouch for that.
Stand, stand at the scene.
It's all right, we all get those.
Last year, there's not a good year, a good day, but no electricity. I'm going to leave at seven o'clock. I've been here since six thirty that morning, no lunch.
I don't have enough vans to take all the kids I saw at church camp.
I saw the one named sitting there.
From A and?
One was said aimed on it, so I could call these and.
Heard a lot of kids standing out there. I don't imagine. They're up to the.
Come, find a place to go and what the Jemal, Turn of Falls.
Huh? Is it a Turn of Falls, is it?
I think it's Falls Creek, isn't that near my Turn of Falls?
I don't know where it's at.
It's kind of good.
Okay, library, I signed those two, right? That's what I'm thinking.
I know, we do that once a year.
Once a year.
Do you mind this one? Yeah, do you mind this one up there at the top where I kind of wrote that in? Pick that original P O on gravel.
Yeah, it's different too. Just Chad Rose.
I got it.
Any of this one there, Stan, will you change that, yeah, from gravel to the shore?
You didn't say a word about that. Sure, the paper we'll do too.
No, I just tied it and waited on it.
If I tell him that, he'll make me come every time.
Well, your salary.
You see, he heard all kinds of things and he got over his head. He's a good boy.
He is a good boy. Somebody likes it right away.
We need to fix him up with a good girl somewhere.
I'm staying out of that.
I love you, thank you.
Home paper?
All right.
Went down blanket first order.
Yes, he will. That one, we're on board crossing, nobody gets it.
Oh, I know you did, you got, you don't share nobody.
He's got the like. Oh, yeah, we had lots of.
Yeah, a lot of.
We signed them ahead of time, we just had to make record that.
Yes.
We had them for county general, bear board, nest attendant responders, nest can, uh, jet rescue, assessor, sheriff, ambulance, District Two, Three, Four, and 911. And I'll give you, there's District Two, and there's District Three.
Is there for me?
Two and two.
And I'm going to have to find the district form, I did not pull it out.
Two, three.
Right.
We signed them already, that's what you signed in earlier. And I'll find to the district form, sorry. Toby and I did get pulled out. Actually Toby probably pulled it out and I just took it back on the pile.
Because we're working off pretty hard. I think it must approve.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Oh, you all in paper, right? Grill crossing permits.
I'm working on mine.
What?
I was in here when the guy was in here getting that. I, I gave him, I said, you stay in my part of the area, and I gave him my business card.
He was a good guy, wasn't he?
He was, he does it right up there. Just keep spending money in my area.
They are, they're drilling around Carmen. One or two. Don't just want to make.
Sorry.
I was thinking of two.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm believing that change. It's only one, he's.
Only one, yes.
I'm literally a third of your own gosh, it's going to be.
Home paper?
All right.
Now we go to appropriations. Yeah.
It's all right.
You got check?
Yeah, I need to look at that too, I need to see where that is. Yeah, I need to look at that too, I need to see who that is, I need to go and spread that. Make sure they get their rider on that. Easily. If they put the rider.
They just water line.
Oh, get water line.
Mr. Palm, Mr. Culver, Cut Road.
We gotta move a bunch right now.
Yeah, let's go cut that road.
The riser?
Yeah.
I'll leave it out, Stan.
What's that?
I'll leave it out.
Well, it's what, uh, four twenty-two, twenty-five? North of Carmen?
It was twenty-two, twenty-five twelve. South last quarter.
Tell them, boom, twenty-two, twenty-five, twelve, what's north of Carmen, around Carmen? Make sure I sign these right spot this time. Still the excess four.
I'm gonna run into the treasurer's office real quick while you guys are signing those.
Go ahead.
Yeah, she, she signed, she signed, that came in after I did these, and so she didn't.
I'm just looking at it.
Decided that was easier since I was watching at the bits, wanting to go home and get ready to go to Ena and Cal.
How was your?
And then just came in, just after I was all finished with her, she says, we. She says, how about if we just write right in?
How was your, uh, year again?
I liked that, that hard and that long.
That's why.
That much, and so long, it was crazy.
We're going to those.
Huh?
You don't like, you don't like laughing?
No, they're always laughing at me.
No, no, no.
The stuff I did when I was in high school. Remember this, remember this, and it's always me, and I go, I get tired of you guys bad memories. It really was at me, I just got blamed for it.
Stop by one of those traffic stops? And it was a funny story. She had us rolling.
Right, right here.
Classmate, it was in the front seat asking, he said, when, when did you graduate high school? He goes, oh, I graduated a long time ago, like two thousand thirteen. She said, oh my God, he was a baby!
Yeah, yeah.
She left her driver's license in the hotel room, and it was just, yes. She said, but he never asked me if I had anything to drink. She said, I'm not my glory.
But.
No, no, she's.
Melissa was turned over backwards, I was, that's what. What?
She had had four years, she was a great police officer, she had.
Oh, she'll be all right.
Just been on her, but he said, they said that they had that, dumb hand, so confused. She's like, she's like, she can tell.
Anyway, I don't want to say. These old ladies, oh, it's my grandma, fellas. We're just weren't ladies, there was a man, take him there.
Somebody wrong. Rest of them all ended up at Hampton where I said that.
Sorry.
Sorry.
I was gonna drill down. That used to be a lot higher.
Yeah.
Thank, oh, it's fine, that's fine. I'm just glad I missed. Yes, it was me. Thank you, thank you, thank you, sorry. No, I'm sorry you had to find that.
Did you ever get your phone back?
They are out there right now, absolutely, I was gapping up a while ago, they are running the line as we speak. He said, where else would he rather be on the day before the Fourth of July, than, I think, running a line in my office.
Is he in your office or in the basement or where?
Right now, they're running a line from my office to the assessor's office and they're going to the basement.
This will cross the hall over there.
So maybe by the time we come back, we'll have.
I make the most approved. All favor.
There are two that were last seen over from, um, fifteen, sixteen, to seventeen, eighteen, and then the remainder all are just our normal ones from last year to this new year. I'm gonna keep those two topics separate, this is, you don't like my life, it's here.
I want that. Ain't sparrow on that one, too. That was a two, I'll keep that.
George, right here, all right. I wouldn't even look at what I was doing.
I hope this on purpose didn't prevent us from stopping this meeting. Probably the address we went, then, well, yeah. Is she gonna be a counselor, or is she gonna, but wasn't a counselor, anyway?
Look, sorry to go. Uh, real sorry, it's my. I did it, it's bad.
Did you see that on national television? It's last night, where there's one state, I think it's Illinois, it's so broke, so in debt, they're about to just dissolve the state, and the four count, the four states around them just take it over.
Yeah. Well, who'd want, who'd want Chicago? All their crime rate and everything else.
Yeah.
It's like, go to work, get done. Get your, get your act together and get your.
Never seen anything like that before, my life, I was just wondering.
It's where your last breath may come from.
He wouldn't want that, excuse me.
Yeah.
I shouldn't say that on more television.
Chicago's always been bad, though.
I worked for a good sweet company, and they sent me to Chicago to a seminar. Made as eye opener, I've ever seen in my life, no one knows. You know, like, a month later, they had one in Houston, I'm like, let's just wait to go to Houston, you know, no, no.
Chicago's quite a place, isn't it?
Quite a place.
Not sure it's a good place, but I, yeah.
We decided to do touring one day after the class, and of course, you don't see very many pickups in Chicago anyway, and so we decided, well, we'll just take the subway out and see. We got so turned around in our direction. I found this young man, he was really nice, he asked us where we was going to, and we told him, we'd already went toured, we're trying to get back to the hotel. And so he told us what direction to go, I'm like, going, yeah, did we trust this guy who knows us from the word? And he was probably just sending us wherever, just because he got us right back to the place, you know?
Were you downtown?
Yes, we were.
Can you imagine Phoebe Engle's sister-in-law, Danny Thompson, who, and children, grew up after, after Danny died, or anything? That's where she made her home.
Oh, really?
She was a social worker.
Oh.
Downtown, she was.
Her sister lives in Chicago. Not downtown. Exactly, there's nowhere to park, you know, people don't even have cars, a lot of places.
Right. They don't, they don't drive.
And there are places where you went to visit her, and you could not walk to, you know? Even like there's one park, and her son said, you go on this side of the park, you're good, don't go on the other side of the park. I'm like, okay.
That's right.
This place has been like that for a long time, others, like, when they lived in Detroit, she went to go shopping, you know, you had to go downtown, so she took the subway, and she came up, and she got out of this, you know, out of there, whatever he wants, train, baguette. He's been racking and flipping. Put her in the store, and she, you're here for a little while, he said, they're having race riots. This was back in, my sister was brilliant, so it would have been back in the very early forties.
I don't know, very long building church, mayor was. Caught was a good man. The mayor. So, what's that tell you?
They escorted me back, back to where I started, and I went back home.
We were supposed to set an example for everybody.
Well, God, my mother had never even been to Oklahoma City.
I guess we can do that.
I got a story better than that. This guy and his wife got transferred into. They grew up New York City, driven. Flying Oklahoma City, just, afraid the bike goes and picks it up. So now, well, he's the first thing he said, where was the city, that was the city. And drive takes thirty years, I'll be thirty years old, I'm driving, so he drives, he said, that was a blast. Never tried.
Well, my sister-in-law came from Germany.
Yeah.
And the first trip that they took, they came from Oklahoma City to eat it in the dark, so she kind of slept most of her. And remember, she, her English that she knew was, wasn't very good. So when they came to Burlington to visit us, about every five minutes, another said that Eddie would go, we about there? Because the vastness of, of the ground was just terrifying to her. It was like going off the edge of there.
All favor. Well, Germany's like, that's a country, it was a, it was a state here.
I'm both.
You just like listening to music?
I didn't know where to go with that, with that. It's probably, I don't know what the, I didn't need to turn that, turn that volume down.
Monthly, awesome report.
Oh, well, I have, it's on from my office, but you know, Friday was the last day of the month, and last day of the fiscal year.
Year and everything else.
So we'll have a bunch next month.
You didn't, did you catch that ringtone, who can it be now?
Yeah.
Oh, who can it be now? It's a good ringtone for a question.
I like Toby's, me and Toby's, you're killing me, man, you're killing me.
Yeah, love you, have that. I make the most approved.
Thank you.
All favor. Nothing, I like Spencer's.
My son, all his answering machine, though, he's, it'll ring and ring, and then pretty soon he'll say hello. And he hesitates, and he said, don't you hate it when that happens? Run a talk to somebody.
I hope that's bad, hand it off. I make the most approved. All favor. Yeah, yeah. Allocation alcohol beverages tax. And he told him, I make the question, he was the other.
I probably need to call him and remind him, don't I?
Yeah, well, he forgot the last one, didn't he?
Oh, yeah, that's what's not like him at all.
That's what I thought when I came, oh, this meeting.
Make the most approved.
Thank you.
All favor. All in favor? I'm thinking the next one is no action.
Yes.
Okay. It's no action on the next one because it's already, they're all paid supposedly. Okay, fiscal year seventeen, eighteen, please purchase, agreement notes, roll state bank.
Folks did those on their own and then I did the ones for the graders and the semis, even though we're doing the graders, trading them in, they still haven't left our premises, so we still have to try to acknowledge them.
They're supposed to already left.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do them all at once. Right? Those?
Just those two.
Those two, yeah.
Whatever did, um, communities and, um.
George, you get one, sure, what's your pick and call? You know, what thing is?
The camera can't see me. Come, okay.
You want a bed?
Rusty, sound about it. Or have to walk out through a ditch and the thistles and everything, it's harsh, but.
I am. I make a motion approved, those two.
I see.
All in favor?
Well, never, we're working back on Saturday.
Here, so you don't reverse any contract that we have, we can only go until one year of the time without doing a renewal, so that's why we.
I'll go first, yeah. Oh, there it is, I see it now. Well, at the end of these one, do these one at a time or all at a time?
That's, I'm telling you.
Yeah, we have one, one down.
Okay, we'll do them all at one time.
I do that.
Make a motion. Second. All in favor?
Do you think it's a T in it, yeah, you can just change?
That's right, you can just, yeah.
It's not hard, is it? I'm surprised mine's been quiet.
Hello, this is. Yes, sir.
Official county newspaper.
I'm in the commission's meeting right now.
Resolution designate official county newspaper.
I sure will do, I will be back with you in a little, thank you, Bill. Bye.
It's all in the county.
Monopoly, uh, monopoly.
That's right. There's only two stoplights in the town, anyhow.
Now, we, we, we're showing one down, I mean, I'm like going off.
What?
The wind, yeah.
Stoplight, the wind, whether that.
It was the morning after the, the.
Cherokee papers are official paper.
So Kyle would table this up just to see.
Yeah. Yeah, he was.
Mind me, that was an important call, I was supposed to call back to the man, I get out of the loop, about three o'clock, second, and I'll go, oh, what am I supposed to call? It's something that they use, see, and.
What, what, Katie, and you better not forget it.
Oh, no, that'd be deadly.
That you say.
Heavy death. This may be survival. Electrical company trying to do something right now, they need to. Probably ten guys sitting up there waiting on my call.
Well, what, what would it be then with the electric company?
I don't know, it's up in Jay's area.
When you get to your sixth step one, we needed to make a motion on percentages also. We've always done sixty-five percent to the highway, thirty-five percent to county general, but we just need to stick that.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
All in favor?
You like the motion?
I'll make the motion to sixty-five, thirty-five. All in favor?
Just, yeah, there's like over both the first deputies and one and that.
Looks, looks all right. Looks all right to me. As far as I know. The ones changing next to me, that too. But that's what I'd say. Pretty sure it's what I did.
We just do our first deputies every, regularly every year, because it's such easier to find them in case that's the last thing you won't have to search for when you have an emergency or something comes along. And we have to do the requisition and receiving officer every year, so.
Right.
As we make those changes through the year, I try to keep track of them.
There's about enough people in the county to go and do all this.
Some question to Diane, is it kind of the first? First office. There's a lot of receiving for our, fire department, just.
It's good to me. You burn it the fuck, hey?
We may assign you something else up, seeing that you don't know about some.
I'll try to see.
Your chest is.
That's not a good idea to try.
That's right.
I just made sure my name wasn't anywhere.
We put again later.
Got my wife's name.
Yeah, sure does.
Yeah, it is, sure does.
She's right over there being my boss.
That's a given, we don't have to sign for that one.
Electorate now, huh? Electorate now, you're.
They haven't made a motion yet.
I'm the big devil champion, I probably won't be what it is.
Don't move.
For all the rest of us, right?
Yes. Second.
All in favor? Private property assets access agreement. Section thirty-three, twenty.
Do I have all three of them?
Same way, do we have them?
Hmm?
Yeah.
No, so you got it, you want all three of them?
I already got it, I was like, I didn't, nobody spoke up, I asked, do we have them, is what I'm wondering. Do you need to look right back at it, I can't, these are up and not below what I am.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All three?
Yes.
Motion approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Really been getting out pretty fast, really.
I know, I suppose it's.
Published notice indebted, yeah, that does, I guess, Tampa County, you know what, whatever it is.
This is what we do every year.
Right.
Basically, that's our vendor's note, get those, um, invoices in, and now if the work's not done, of course, that's a totally different story, but if the work is done, they have to, at the end of September, bring those things into us to get us, get them paid.
You want us all threes?
Yes.
All threes?
It's already been turned in in the paper, their deadline was on Friday.